This meeting will be called to work. As you are able and willing, please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming. First order of business is public comment. We have no one who has signed up to deliver public comments, so we will move directly into the report of the secretary. A motion, please, to approve the minutes of our last meeting.
I'm going to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of Wednesday, November 20th, 2024.
I'll second Kate.
Thank you. Comments or questions? You did a sterling job.
Yep.
All in favor? That's five oh. Thank you. Brings us to the report of the chair. I have a smallish number of items on my list tonight. First, our next meeting with town officials will be next Wednesday, December 11th. I'm trying to remember whether that one had the central office. I know there was a mix-up with the [inaudible]. So that next one will be in the central office, and if you want it to be at Zoom, let me know, and I'll arrange that. Brief MSBA BA update. The MSBA year is kicking off. We have an organizational meeting coming up later this month. The year will start in earnest in January when the committee starts meeting. You will all have gotten an email from the MSBA today, I hope, which was the December update that talks about a lot of things that are going on. Of particular interest is the talk about the Legislative Committee, what that committee will be facing as we get into the legislative year this coming year. So I would recommend that you all have a look at that email. And if you have any questions about it, let me know. I know somebody on board up there. Okay. Third thing is that on, at our next meeting, two weeks from now, we're going to have a workshop with our state senator and our state representatives to talk about the coming legislative year and educational concerns. So think about that, whatever topics you want to discuss with them. That concludes my report and brings us to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you very much. I guess this is good timing. Review of procedures for weather cancellations or delays. So I sent out a letter the Friday after Thanksgiving to kind of outline what our procedures were. I just want to remind parents that ultimately, you know, this is their decision. If they feel they're concerned with, you know, travel and safety, obviously, we respect that and would excuse those absences. I just wanted to point out that Thursday's creates a really unique set of challenges the way that things are arranged right now, and so try my best not to ever have a cancellation on a Thursday. By scheduling, we automatically have an hour delay already built into the schedule, and so that does give us a little bit of flexibility. But Thursdays always seems to be the questions that come up when it comes to these situations. So, and again, a two-hour delay would be two hours from when you're picked up. Yes, if you're picked up at 6:15 in the morning, you'd get picked up at 8:15 in the morning, you know, at the same stop. So certainly, we've had a lot of questions. You know, tomorrow morning, obviously, I will confer with the area superintendents as well as Jay Riedemacher from the Department of Public Works, and we'll make the best decision that we can with the data that we have. Any questions? Okay. Number two is an update on pre-kindergarten. Got some really disappointing news. About a week and a half ago, we had applied for a $150,000 grant from the state of Maine, and really, the grant was focused on trying to allow schools to be able to move towards a full-day, all-day programming, universal programming in pre-kindergarten. We did not get that grant, which, you know, had a significant impact on us as we started to plan for this. And so I just want to have the conversation with the board because I want to proceed really carefully right now as we go forward, because I just, I don't want to create expectations, and then financially, we may not be able to do something. And so I just kind of want to give you a kind of a global picture of what we're talking about. The last meeting Ryan shared with you kind of our projections for next year. Those projections can be, you know, they can be off by a little, by a lot, but I think our track record is that we're pretty spot-on with our predictions. And so if we were going to move, and I'm going to take space out of the conversation for a second, if we were going to move to an all-day, universal pre-K program, it really looks like we would need five sections at Central School. Currently, we have three sections. And then at LA Elementary School, this is a little more the tricky one. We would definitely need one additional section, but in all likelihood, we would need two additional sections. And so when you start to add up the cost of that, you're probably talking, again, you know, we use that $100,000 marker for a class of a teaching position, so you're talking about, about $400,000 for four teachers, and then if you're talking about adding four educational technicians, you're, again, probably half of that, about $50,000 per educational technician. So that's a $600,000 impact that would happen. And so what I'm concerned about is creating this excitement and, you know, enthusiasm about the possibility of this programming, and then all of a sudden, in February, when we start to get budget news back, that's a, it's a big chunk of money that we need to be able to put out. So to give you a ballpark, and Ryan, if I get this wrong, please correct me, but about $600,000 is, by itself, without any increases than anything else, that's about a 3% increase to the local taxpayers, if things stayed as they were this past year. That's what we don't know. And so I guess what I'm asking is, and my, my gut instinct is, is that I think we should proceed really slowly right now, maybe wait until early February before we get some information back from the state so we can see what our state subsidy is. That number's going to be really important to us. There's some significant changes in Washington, DC, so I'm not sure how that's going to impact things when it comes to state funding with the budgets. So there's a lot of things up in the air, and I just, my, my gut instinct is, you know, I just don't want to start making, you know, not necessarily promises, but anticipation of something that could happen, and then all of a sudden, at the last minute, have to say, oh, by the way, we can't do that. And so I would love to see it happen personally, you know, so we can maybe slow things down a little bit for the next six weeks or so, until we start to get some more information back from the state. I can report that back to you. We can also kind of build for the future, where the board may decide that they want to go forward with it, or not go forward with it. But I just wanted to put that out to the board before we took that next step, because we did talk about kind of creating a committee to look at things, but I just feel like with that news, that, that $150,000 is a considerable chunk of money to kind of lose out of, out of that picture, and just wanted to kind of put that out to the board. I had talked to Beth Glidden on a number of different occasions about this, and just, obviously, there's impact on our community as well, as far as, you know, as parents, our daycares, and those types of things. And so trying to find, you know, an honest approach to be able, how do we do this? You know, we pride ourselves in being so fiscally conservative about everything that we do, and I just, I'm really concerned with just, there's so many variables going into the new year. I'm just not sure what it looks like. And so it may be great, and we may have a windfall, and that would be wonderful, like everybody would smile about that. I just don't, I don't know that right now, so. Any thoughts from the board?
I mean, I think that you're absolutely right. We need to back burner it, honestly, because I, I wouldn't think it would be fair to, you know, ask the taxpayers to come up with an extra 3% next year, if, if that's what the number is. I mean, yeah, and best not to, to promise something we can't deliver on financially. I mean, that's just pretty risky in itself, yeah. So I think that the approach of back burner, you know, and just kind of settle it back for, for the time being, and if we come into a wad of money, then, you know, then we can put it back on the table to discuss, but I don't know. What are you all thinking?
I agree. I think also, we need to be careful. We could come into a wad of money for one year, and then we don't want to set ourselves up where we can, oh, let's do it this year, and now it's something that parents count on or expect, and then we have hired staff, and then that creates a whole other web of things that I think we need to make sure that if we do it, that there's some, like, expectation of longevity if we do it.
Sure. That sounds logical.
Yeah, I agree. I think that sounds logical.
Yeah. Same. I don't think we should stop.
No, absolutely not.
I think slow rolling is a good idea.
I think just taking a little bit of a pause right now. We're talking about really six weeks until we have more information. You know, the other thing that's always an option is that, is you slowly start to build towards it. And so that's something that, you know, there, I think there are a number of options out there, rather than just saying that this is not going to happen, because I think that's, I don't think, necessarily think that's the right decision either, but I think we just have to take all these factors into play right now. You know, although the federal funding, we're not sure what's going to happen to the Department of Education at the federal level. That does really impact a lot of our title grants and funding of main care and those types of things, and so how will that impact the states individually? I'm not, I don't think we all have a clear picture of that at this point in time, so. Okay. All right. I will, we will hold our breath and hope for the best as, as the ED279 comes out, hopefully at the middle of January or the end of January. My guess is probably the state of Maine's saying the same thing, so it's probably going to be closer to the end of January, just because they're going to probably want to get as many variables solidified as they can. The other piece of information with this, I just think is important, is just to kind of, again, talk about that, the free and appropriate education transition from CDS to the schools. And so we are in the midst of that right now. We are cohort one school with that. And so what that means, again, is that in basically now three and a half years, schools are going to be responsible for the early education of three-year-olds who might have unique needs, and also four-year-olds with unique needs. And so that's going to be very interesting in how that funding looks as we start to go through this. You know, we got in cohort one, which is, it was the right decision for us to kind of work a lot of the things through. You know, the state has said they have to fund 100% of the cost of that. I just, I'm leery of what they define as 100% of the cost, and what I define as 100% of the cost may not necessarily be the same thing. So I'm just, that's just my, where my head goes. So I just want to be careful. I think we're trying to maximize that right now as much as we can. There is a position on, that you may have seen posted last week, or early, early this week, for a, basically, our early education IP coordinator position. And so that's 100% funded by CDS. You know, as you know, I have an incredible amount of respect for Angie Beneskevich, and a lot of that has fallen on her shoulders right now, and it's just, it continues to grow and get bigger, and it's just, it's almost its own beast now. I know beast isn't a bad word, but its own expectations now. And so she and I had a really good conversation, and so the state will 100% fund that position. We tried to do it a different way, and it just, it just wasn't realistic with all the other things that are on the table right now. And so, you know, we'll post that position and see what we get. The other challenge with that is that we have got to get accustomed to that rolling admission of three-year-olds. And so it's not just the kids showing up for school and saying, hey, I'm here for the day. It's now that it's the testing, it's the meetings, it's the IP creations, it's the IPs, it's the specialists, it's coordinating. Like, there's, there's many more steps that are involved in that than you kind of feel like as you initially think about it. Well, sure, if a kid shows up in November, kid shows up in November. It's just like, we have a kid moving to town. It doesn't quite work that way. And so it's also a very difficult number for us to gauge, because we just don't know. It's kind of like, in that respect, almost like pre-K on steroids, because we're just not sure who's going to kind of come through the door at the next minute, which is kind of part of the challenge, but I think it's also part of the excitement of the position, so. So those two things do go together. I think that we have some creative plans that if the district does decide to want to go forward with a pre, a full-day, universal pre-K program, there's some things that we can do with our CDS programming that would allow us to be able to maximize some space, and so like, that's one of the variables that we can control. And just, as you know, I try my best to be able to get all the facts, put them out on the table, and then be able to make the decision based on those parameters. And just right now, there's just, there's just a lot of unknowns out there for us to, it's not like we're trying to manage one variable, we're trying to manage five variables right now. Any questions? Okay. I'm full of good news today. I'm sorry. I apologize. On a positive note, we did just get recognized for fall sportsmanship awards in boys soccer, girls cross-country, and football. And, you know, again, that's, you know, this is the third year in a row where we've had multiple teams earn those awards, and so I just think that's a credit to the programming that we have here and our student athletes, so. Congratulations to all of them.
Yes.
I just want to also remind you all that we have on the agenda a board workshop for January 8th, and if you could start to, to share some of your, you know, one topic each, if we could, two agenda items of what we'd like to talk about at that meeting, and one of those things that we do want to talk about is, is kind of the parameters as we prepare for the budget season. Just kind of have that early conversation before we, before we get too far along in the process. That would be helpful for me before we, you know, present my budget in March. Any questions? Tomorrow, I have a meeting with our career and technical counselor and Principal Hooper with Ms. Hrilliersey. We are meeting on LD 436. It's an act to provide career and technical education students with credit towards high school graduation for work completed in career and technical education centers and regions. So we talked about that a little bit in the last meeting, but this is really, you know, this is a new state law, which I think is, is a wonderful opportunity for some of our students. There's a portion of our students who kind of get locked out of being able to take vocational, excuse me, the SRTC programming, either at Sanford or at Dover. And so this really allows students, for instance, if they, you know, say sometimes kids have a difficult freshman year, that's not uncommon, and if they fail a singular English class, they have to double up in English, and that really takes away their electives, because ultimately, that, that space and the schedule is taken by that class. And so now, with this process, there may be certain SRTC courses that may qualify as a technical English class, so that would be one credit towards graduation. So that kind of opens up that door for a child to be able to access that. Same thing with math, science, health, health occupations, or physical education. So we're going to start, have a conversation tomorrow, start to process that a little bit. And I also want to share with you that it really seems as though SRTC continues to add more and more programming, which is a wonderful thing, and so I do not see the number of students from Marshwood attending the SRTC reducing. I only see as more opportunities become available, more students taking advantage of that, which is a great opportunity for, for our students. But it's something that we have to be mindful of, as this credit piece is really going to be important as we start to plan the schedule for next year and years going forward, so. We've talked about this for a long time, and it's, it's happening right now.
So will it be for next year in place?
Yes, it has to be in place September 1st.
Oh, good.
Yep. So I think one of the challenges when we build the district budget is, there are very few students you can say, like, I know that they're going to go to SRTC. If they're typically in a two-year program, you have a sense of some, but there are a number of one-year programs, and you're also, when we're building the budget, they haven't done the acceptance yet for SRTC, so we don't necessarily know how many students are going. And so you kind of take a, you know, an educated guess when you start to kind of, how many English sections do we need? How many math sections do we need? And so trying to work on a process for that, this would be part of the conversation tomorrow, is to how do we streamline this so that we have a little bit better information as we start to prepare for course enrollment, you know, and that, that is really difficult at times to be able to gauge. And so the high school, as you know, when it comes to class sizes and impact, is really the most difficult building, because it's, it's, there's so many pathways that kids can go down now, and so, as I said before, the freshmen and sophomore year typically, for the most part, the same. It becomes a junior, senior when you start accessing more and more electives, whether it's, you know, York County Community College, whether it's at SRTC, whether it's to Dover, whether through an ELO program. There's just kind of even more and more options for kids. Any questions? Stay tuned. We will bring this information back, and we will meet with the SRTC. One of the questions, I think is a great question, is that will colleges accept those courses when they look at students for, for application? And so will the Technical English 1 be recognized by the University of Maine? And so what the SRTC is doing is they are going through the NCAA Clearinghouse, and the NCAA Clearinghouse is really one of those areas where they say, these courses count, these courses don't count, and just try to send them the transcripts and course outlines to be able to see if they actually will qualify, so we can have those questions answered before we go into this. So that's going to be a really important part of this. We don't want to run so fast that we've been hurting kids, but we try to apply to schools. That would be their post-secondary opportunities, so. Just one last thing before I turn it over to the student report. I had a really good conversation today, or excuse me, an email conversation, I guess, and the QEA provided some valuable feedback on the school calendar. And so I thought they had a wonderful thought that I'll share with you the next meeting that we have, and then the hopes would be is that we can review those thoughts. I'll probably provide two different options for the school calendar, and then, you know, we have a vote on it at the next meeting prior to the new year that would be acceptable. I really appreciated the thought about the flow of the school year. That was really kind of the focus of their concerns, which was really, it was a great perspective to have, so I just want to make sure that we're working on that and to share that information with you, so.
Great.
Okay. Thank you. Turn over to you.
So in the past few weeks, all winter sports have started practicing, and teams are having their first few games throughout the coming weeks. So girls basketball is a game tonight at Wells. Boys basketball will have a game Friday at Kenabunk. Boys wrestling will kick off their season with a match on the 11th at Noble. And boys hockey's next match will be the 13th at Dover Ice Arena. And then Student Gov had a general assembly meeting on Monday where we spoke in our committees and set our calendars for the year, and we're really excited to start making headway on some action items in the coming weeks.
For extracurriculars, auditions for this year's one-act play, Citizens United, will be held on December 10th for all interested students. Interact will be collecting donations for its winter care kits throughout the next week. Mittens, hats, socks, snacks, and other winter items are going to be put together and provided for families in need. The Hawk Buddies program is being run again this year, and high school mentors are getting ready to meet their buddies next week. For student life, UMaine, Orno, and USM are holding their on-the-spot decisions on the 6th and the 10th. That's what we have.
Can I just add one other quick thing? I just would be ashamed of myself if I didn't mention, I just need to recognize Lily Whalen.
Yes.
Just imagine being a first-year teacher, you know, right out of college, and all of a sudden, you're starting school, you go right into District Musical Trials, which is an undertaking all by itself for even the most veteran teacher, and then to go to that show and that performance, oh my gosh, just.
Fantastic.
Yeah, probably back in time, five years ago, and the music, and just, it was such a professionally-done production, and just the kids benefited from it. I'm just, I'm so proud of Lily and just, you know, the students, so I just wanted to make sure I recognized that.
It was awesome.
Yeah, it was awesome. Yeah, great. And I love the opportunity that she took to talk about the Nazi symbolism and creating an educational moment. She did that with the students prior to the show, and also, you know, prior to the show, I just thought that was an opportunity, and it's just, it's incredible when someone has such thought to, to not miss that teachable moment and captivate that, and sometimes, you know, share that with adults as well as students. It was just, it was fantastic, so. All right. Sorry. Thanks.
Thank you very much. We have no correspondence to report on, so we'll move into the report of the committees. Finance and Facilities will next meet next Wednesday, just be prior to our, excuse me, two weeks from now, just prior to our regular meeting. Ed Policy will also meet on that day. We have no updates on Ed Policy here. We have a couple of second reads to make.
Second reads. We're a little bit off-kilter with that, but we'll go back on the schedules, okay.
And then while this SEL met through here this evening, who wants to do this, please?
I will report on that. So we met, we didn't meet in November, so this is our first meeting since Judge Broderick's presentation in October. So we just sort of debriefed and discussed that, and then also had a bit of discussion as far as, you know, it was, it was very well-attended. There was a lot of staff that were there, which was fantastic. And, you know, we've had several of these presentations geared toward parents and kids, and are we really getting enough of an audience? And maybe should we think about shifting our focus as far as wellness to bringing things directly to kids? So could we maybe talk about, like, some motivational speakers or something like that, and sort of at each, maybe at the elementary schools one quarter, middle school another quarter, so maybe thinking about how we can impact kids a little more directly going forward? Let's see. I'm going to follow up with the principals at the middle school and the high school and see about really solidifying a rep, a wellness representative to come to our meetings pretty consistently. I think we're definitely missing student voice at our meetings. And then also talked about some opportunities for staff wellness that really brings the staff together. And so, yeah, that was it. Did I cover it? Yep.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay. That concludes reports of the committees. New business. First up, we have a couple of second reads. May I have a motion, please, with regard to the second read on EEAEF?
I'll move to approve the second reading and adoption of policy EEAEF, video cameras on transportation vehicles.
Second, Heather.
That is very good. Thank you. No changes since our last read. Any comments or questions about this? All in favor? That's five oh. Thank you. Motion, please, with regard to the second read on JLCF.
I move to approve the second reading and adoption of policy JLCF, prediculous, prediculosis headlights in schools.
I'll second Kate.
Kate, thank you. Again, no changes since our last read.
Can I just share a note with this? We worked with the district nurses, as well as the district administrators and building administrators, to create a more robust protocols to share with families when it comes to lights and kind of what the, you can expect from schools, and be able to really clearly define that. I think part of the issue is, it's, it's sometimes a mystery, and like, creating a clear standard of what families can expect was one of the things that we really found really important to do, and so part of that is, is I've had a couple of families reach out asking, you know, would we take donations of RID if we, they, if RID had that? You know, would we certainly, we'd take those at the nurse's office and trying to work through what the best way to handle it is. So I think we, you know, we've seen some really positive feedback on that. It was a really, really detailed letter, but it was detailed intentionally just to try to provide all of the facets to what happens with that, so.
Excellent job handling that.
Yeah, good job.
As always. Thank you. Comments or questions otherwise? All in favor? Five oh. That's good. Can I have a motion, please, with regard to our revenue anticipation note?
I'll move that the vote entitled vote to authorize an extension of the $500,000 2024 tax and revenue anticipation note be approved in form presented to this meeting, and that the secretary file and attested copy of said vote with the minutes of this meeting.
Second, Heather.
Thank you.
Can I explain this to people? And so, as you may remember, back in June or early July, we took the revenue anticipation note to be able to fund the $500,000 we received from the federal government. And so we are able to pay that loan back now. The situation is, though, is that we're going to go right into a three-pay check a month. And so rather than paying one loan off and then trying to start a new loan, we just extended this, this loan to be able to manage that three-pay check a month. That will be the last three-pay check month of the year, and obviously, through February through June is when you start to catch up on that. So I just, we just want to make sure we're not leaving ourselves cash, in case there was an emergency.
Any other questions about that? All in favor? Five oh. That's good. Thank you very much. We need to sign that after we.
That's correct. Yes.
That's it. New business. That brings us to building administrator check-in.
Do you mind if I introduce the [inaudible]?
Yes.
Our new principal at LA Elementary School. She is in day three of being fully in charge, so fantastic. Welcome. So I'm going to, you want to, maybe want to go last? You want to go first?
First or last? Or middle?
I'll go first.
Don't. Go before Jerry. I'm just going to give you some advice right now. So just, you know, make sure you.
We have a lot going on, and just a big thank you. We had a wonderful book fair art night, ice cream night, the last week, so it was just really cool, because Brenda Stewart has a new, she changed rooms this year to a new a new, she changed rooms this year to a new art room. And she made her actual art room into the art studio. So all the kids just, it was really cool because they tried to run there first even before ice cream and books. So they were all, it was, got to see their art. Everybody had at least two displays in the art room, then got to have ice cream. And then we sold thousands of dollars of books. I think it was the best attended event we had. I think we were in between like sport seasons and it was just really good timing. It was out the door, the line out the door for the ice cream. So that was our PTO, did the ice cream. So it was just a really neat night. Friday, we have our third graders are going to the Nutcracker in Rochester as they always do before gearing up for their big performance next week of the Nutcracker on the 10th. So we're excited. It's a really exciting time for that. And then we also found out we have a, we did a MAF grant for Junk to Funk in February. So we are doing Junk to Funk again, split between MAF, PTO and our own funds. So we're just really excited. It's such a really fun residency and the kids love it. So that'll be in February.
Great. What is Junk?
Thank you.
Wow, it's awesome. It's all built around kindness and they do, they teach each kid how to use recycled instruments and they do performances. And then they, I think they see each class at least twice. So they really get to know their, their content and then they have a big performance.
So imagine driving, Tuesday, this is Tuesday afternoon, excuse me, Tuesday morning. I'm driving down Academy Street. I can see into the gym windows and I can see the, the lights flickering in the gym. And so I know what that means at the Grayworks School, that there's a, there's a problem with the power. So you get into the gym or you get into the school and there's, you know, you got like a third of the lights. And then all of a sudden, you, the lights come on and everyone's hooray. And all of a sudden you hear this pop and then there's, there's no lights. John, I'm talking to John and like, what are we, what are we going to do? And those are kind of hanging there for a while. So I just, first of all, just have to thank, you know, the teachers because, you know, you come in there, it's the day before vacation, kids are a little wound and you have these plans. And those plans are out the window right off the bat. You know, we make the decision to, we're going to, we're going to keep the kiddos. The kids were phenomenal. They, it was, they were so, they were great. Cafeteria, all of a sudden, the lunch that we were going to have, we can't cook it. And so it just, everyone just came together. So I just want to give a shout out to everyone for, for that Tuesday. Then I think, Ian, if I remember correctly, I think I hired you. Okay, so just.
Ninety-five.
Okay, back. And so saying that because like this afternoon, I was, I had a parent, a new kiddo, and I was walking around the building. And we do a good job hiring. We really do. And so I was, we've got, I go into the gym, there's a brand-new teacher in the gym after school playing ball with a bunch of kids. I look out into the, on the, in the parking lot, we have a group of, or three or four teachers. They've got a solo stove. There's a little campfire going. They're reading ghost stories. A brand-new teacher is involved in that. I look in the, the special ed window and there are, there's a second-year teacher, special ed teacher after school. It was five o'clock when I left there. And so they would just, you know, we do a really good job hiring. Obviously did a good job hiring, hiring Ian. And then another group that I saw, I went, I went into the, into the home ec room and there were four girls with Mrs. Morris and they were cooking. Now, these are girls that came to me and they said, Ms. Brindell, we want to raise money. And I'm always telling you about fundraisers, but they came to me and they said, we want to raise money. And I said, what do you want to raise money for? And they said, and they, they were arguing on what they wanted to raise money for. And I said, well, you got to get your act together. Okay? So come back to me when you know what you want to do. So they come back and they said, we decided on St. Jude's. And so they, they have settled. And, and why do we want to do St. Jude's? So they tell me. And so we want to do a bake sale. I said, no, you can't do a bake sale. We don't, we don't do bake sales at the, at the Grayworks School. I said, come up with another plan. And so they came up with a plan to sell cookies after the, the concert, because we have a concert coming up. So they were just, they, these are problems. I mean, they're, they're shot. And so I just, here's this teacher staying after school with these kiddos, these four or five girls are just having a great time, but they're, they're doing things for the right reason to help others. So as I'm walking after school, there's just these things going on that are just phenomenal. And I mean, the kids are great and you couldn't do it without great teachers. So, thanks.
Thank you.
So I'd like to share that our third graders recently went to White Pines to explore the nature harvest and connect with the Wampanoag studies. One of their favorite things on the trip was they played tree tag to learn how to identify the different trees. And they were very taken by a tree that a beaver had gnawed. They were thrilled to learn that beavers not only do that to build their dams, but to file their teeth because their teeth continue to grow their whole life. Second graders went to Strawberry Bank to participate in Feast of Festival with the help of role players. They studied the theme of the Thanksgiving through three centuries, learning about charity, survival, gratitude, national identity and the celebration of family and community. Some of their favorite hands-on activities was making matzo ball soup, stringing beans to dry for the winter and making charity baskets. Third graders will be going to, not going to, but making, participating in a community project with Mrs. Sarah Boner. And they're decorating a tree outside the number eight schoolhouse for the birds for winter. They're making popcorn and cranberry strings, birdhouses out of recycled milk cartons and making pine coon feeders and drying orange slices. And then the last thing I want to share is Mrs. Fallon is in our learning center. She has an amazing therapy dog named Drea. And she has been to our school a couple of times this year. She's an Irish wolfhound. She's the most kindest, gentlest dog you will ever meet. And it just has a great impact on our children and our teachers. She's wonderful. So thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just add one thing? I just, I wanted to touch on the power at Marshall Grayworks School. And I'm going to ignore Dr. De'Aaron right now. But we are in a little bit of a kerfuffle right now with affinity lighting and Main Central Power. When the lights went, 115 of our lights blew, of our new LED lights.
Oh, my goodness.
And so if you were to go in the classrooms right now, it's a little spotty in places. Ryan and I and Todd Hughes were in the building on Wednesday trying to change some lights over. It was, I was basically holding the ladder, but that's okay. And so just want to let you know that that's taking place. We're trying to find the best way to handle that. I'd like to try to keep the attorneys out of it at this point, you know, because they just, but I think it's going to be who's on first conversation. The issue seems to be that the line that runs from Marshall Grayworks School to the power source is so old that it is literally broke. And so they had to dig a hole, fix the line. And so hopefully within the next six months or so, we'll be able to rerun the line and reroute it a little bit. But just want to make people aware that the other part is, is that we have purchased or in the process of purchasing a surge protector that will protect the entire building. And so we tried to do that a year ago. We couldn't find a vendor that could do it at a reasonable cost. We actually found one now. And so I'll update you later on that. But that obviously would have hopefully protected some of the lights. Interesting part of the, about the lights is that they are under warranty. And so the question becomes, was it caused by the, you know, surge in the power or was it caused by the, you know, a problem with the lights? And so we'll continue to have that pleasant conversation.
Yep.
Oh, geez.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Any last thoughts from the board? I have one thing I just wanted to say real quick. Somebody, Matty mentioned the MAF. They're in the process of doing their Berry Tree Fest fundraiser right now. It's up at Spring Hill tonight, tomorrow night, Friday night. It's a really awesome opportunity for people to go and look at some really creative ideas around themed trees, including one that the members of this, this school board did. And to, to buy tickets, to win trees and prizes and to support the MAF. So I just wanted to put a plug in for that. Okay. That's it then. I'll take a motion to adjourn, please.
I move to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? That's five oh. And we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.